Enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify the community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and most importantly, spiritual renewal. Now therefore be it resolved, we the governing body of the city of Vermillion do hereby proclaim April 26, 2019 as Arbor Day in Vermillion and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. Be it further resolved that all citizens are urged to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of current and future generations. Dated at Vermillion, South Dakota, this fifteenth day of April, 2019.
Jim, will you receive this please?
Good evening, members of the council. Thank you very much on behalf of the Parks and Recreation Department here in Vermillion recognizing the importance of Arbor Day. Recently, Mr. Prescott presented me with the recognition that the Vermillion has received the Arbor Day for Tree City USA for the thirty-fourth consecutive year. So it's kind of a big deal for us to have that. Not all communities in South Dakota or across the nation receive that. There's a set of criteria that the Arbor Day Foundation sets forth and we do meet that and exceed that actually. So we're very pleased for that one. In conjunction with the Arbor Day, we will be doing a tree planting ceremony over at Prentice Park on April 26 at noon. The location of the tree will be between the playground at Prentice Park and the Prentice Plunge Bathhouse. We'll be planting an Autumn Blaze pear tree this year. We're inviting second graders from the school there to come join us and I invite you guys all as well to come join us. Part of the Tree City USA award, we have to have a tree board. And the council member that sits here is Rich and thank you for Rich for being on that. We have two citizen members, Joan Dawes and Aaron Badke are the two citizen members that sit on this. We meet about four to five times a year. It's a nice little gathering that we can talk about trees and the situations and issues that we do have with trees here in our community. So on behalf of, again, Parks and Rec, we do thank you for recognizing this and again I invite everyone to the Arbor Day Tree Planting Ceremony, April 26 at noon over at Prentice Park.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Now we have a proclamation for Public Transit Week and Kelsey, please.
Proclamation declaring Public Transit Week. Whereas Vermillion Public Transit is a public transit provider for Vermillion, South Dakota and the surrounding area, and whereas public transportation plays a significant role in the economic strength and independence of our community, and whereas public transportation encourages and provides opportunity for coordination with unlimited additional programs to avoid the duplication of transportation services and expenses, and whereas Vermillion Public Transit drove seventy-one thousand four hundred and forty-nine miles and provided fifty-nine thousand four hundred and fifteen passenger trips in 2018, and whereas public transit professionals request recognition of continued and expanded public transportation, strengthening of our communities through employment opportunities, medical care, youth transportation, and maintaining an active role in our communities, and whereas the continued strength and integrity of public transportation and its future depends upon educating and maintaining communication with our federal, state, and local decision-makers. Now therefore be it resolved that we the governing body of Vermillion, South Dakota do hereby proclaim April 22 through 27, 2019 as Public Transit Week in Vermillion, South Dakota, dated at Vermillion, South Dakota, this fifteenth day of April, 2019.
Arbor.
First off, we want to just say thank you very much to the council and the mayor Powell for making this proclamation on behalf of Vermillion Public Transit. As Councilwoman Collierwise pointed out, there is nearly sixty thousand rides that happened last year alone. And those rides really are community service. That includes safe rides that happen on Friday and Saturday nights to get people from downtown to home safely or from home to downtown. And that also includes taking care of many of our most vulnerable population and getting them to places as simple as to the grocery store and getting their groceries back home with them. So public transit is a crucial part of this community and when you think of a town of only around ten thousand or so, sixty thousand rides over the course of the year, I hope proves just the impact that Vermillion Public Transit has on this community and we can't be gracious enough to this council for your support and for this proclamation.
Thank you.
And I'd like to invite you guys next week during Public Transit Week to give us, use us, take a ride. And we also have on Thursday, the twenty-fifth, is our open house from four to six over at the Public Transit Building, so come on over.
Thank you. Appreciate it. We have a proclamation for World Autism Month proclamation and Catherine, please.
Proclamation of World Autism Month. Whereas autism spectrum disorders are a broad range of conditions characterized by challenges with social skills, repetitive behaviors, and speech and non-verbal communication. And whereas autism spectrum disorders affect at least one in fifty-nine children and an unknown number of adults in the United States of all genders, races, ethnicities, and socioeconomic backgrounds. And whereas early accurate diagnosis and appropriate education intervention and supports are vital to the well-being of those with autism spectrum disorders, and whereas persons with an autism spectrum disorder should have access to the care, services, and opportunities they need to be happy and to achieve their greatest potential. And whereas the city of Vermillion is honored to take part in the annual observance of World Autism Month in the hope that it will lead to more research and better understanding and acceptance of autism spectrum disorder. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the governing body of the city of Vermillion, South Dakota, do hereby proclaim April, 2019 as Autism Month in Vermillion to raise public acceptance and understanding of autism spectrum disorder as well as to increase knowledge of the efforts that have been and are being made to support individuals with autism spectrum disorder and their families. Dated at Vermillion, South Dakota, this fifteenth day of April, 2019.
Ray, would you receive this?
Well, I want to thank you for making this proclamation. I first became aware of autism, I guess, a long time ago when I first met my wife because she was a special ed teacher and had a student with autism. It's become a much more prominent, much more frequent condition. More recently, we've had many increases in the amount of autism apparently, for whatever reason. And part of the reason I'm involved here is because we've been involved in the legislature now for several years trying to increase the support for particularly ABA, Applied Behavioral Analysis, which is a very effective way of helping kids on the autism spectrum, but also very expensive. And we had a setback last year because of a loophole that was found in the insurance laws and we weren't able to get that changed. And so these sorts of proclamations help to show the support that there is out there for autism treatment and hopefully will maybe change some minds in peer next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. At this line, we'd like to welcome German-American Partnership Program students. And Ms. Divley, would you be so kind as to lead it off?
Yes, definitely. Thank you for inviting us. My name is Camden Divley and I'm the German teacher at the high school in town. These two are my German teaching colleagues. This is Ms. Linda Bunca and then we have Tanya Blum-Kampa and they are teachers at the Dietrich Bonhoeffer Gymnasium in Rattingen, which is our sister city and then also the school that we attend when we travel to Germany. We're part of the German-American Partnership Program. It's a program that is all across the US and Germany. It's not just our school. We participate in it as a part of the Goethe Institute. It's also partially funded by our Congress and the Bundestag, I believe, in Germany and it's the only short-term exchange program in the US that is funded by our Congress. And that's pretty cool. It's a pretty big deal. Other than that, the purpose is to establish partnerships and friendships between American high schools and German high schools and promote that lifelong friendship. And already we have been very, very successful in that. We've had so much fun ourselves as professionals personally and the friendships that we see that develop between the students from the two schools and their families has really, really been an exciting thing for us to see. And we know that you have supported us every time we've traveled. I thank you for that. We have traveled to the school in Rattingen now three times. Two thousand fourteen was the first year we did that, two thousand sixteen and then last summer again, and this is the third time that they have been here, so. Both of the teachers have been here before at different times and now together. They do have a little something for the mayor.
Yes. Good evening, members of the council. Good evening, Mr. Powell. We are very happy to be here. We are very grateful for the hospitality we received here and we are happy that we have the chance to strengthen our American-German partnership and friendship. And I have a present for you from our mayor, Mr. Petz, and I would like to give it to you.
Thank you.
I'd like to have our members of the gap program that are here stand up and if you'll come and stand behind us. We have sixteen American students who are hosting sixteen German students.
Sehr gut.
Sehr gut. You know. And we also have many of their parents in attendance as well, but like you to see them all.
We have a key in the city of Vermillion. Don't try it downstairs, it won't work.
Do you have any Germans back there? Do you have some more? Raise your hand if you're German and you haven't gotten a key.
Anyone else? Again, welcome to our city and I hope you have a good time and I'll see you tomorrow afternoon downtown. Aren't you going to stay for the rest of the meeting? I think we'll continue on with our meeting moving on to public hearings. Item A, transfer of a retail on-off sale malt beverage license with South Dakota Farm Wine from J. Ambry Seven LLC for Freedom Value Center to I-Mark Stores LLC for I-Mark Stores USA at eight-thirty East Cherry. And Mike, please.
An application was received from I-Mark Stores LLC for the transfer of their retail on-off sale malt beverage license with South Dakota Farm Wine from J. Ambry Seven LLC for the Freedom Value Center at eight-thirty East Cherry Street to I-Mark Stores USA. The notice of hearings included in the packet. City council has the ability to issue or transfer a license on basically two criteria, suitable applicant, suitable location. As to the location, there has been a license at this location for a number of years. As to the suitable applicant, the corporate officer of I-Mark Stores LLC, Mufak Zeig, had submitted the information for the DCI and FBI background check. The DCI form was returned to the city as was not completed correctly and it was passed on down, passed on to Mr. Rezek for corrections. He said that they mailed the application again on April tenth, so the background check information is currently unavailable. As the public hearing was advertised for tonight, it is recommended that you conduct the public hearing for the license, but as we do not have the background check, it'd be recommended that the public hearing be continued until May sixth, 2019 to give time for the police chief to receive the background check.
I think we can go direct to the council with this. A motion to second to continue. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close no. She carries. Thank you, Mike. Item B, special daily malt beverage and wine license for Vermillion Chamber of Commerce and Development Company on or about April eighteenth, 2019 at eight-twenty-six Cottage for wine tasting events. Again, Mike, please.
This will be another fairly quick one. Vermillion Chamber and Development Company submitted the application for the special daily malt beverage and wine license for a wine tasting event on April eighteenth. The event was going to partner with the VCDC, the upnext group of Vermillion and the Vermillion Liquor Store and a wine distributor. As there's a conflict with this date, the VCDC has requested to withdraw their application. The parties are looking at a date this fall for the event. As the public hearing was published, this item is included on the agenda with the action being just to acknowledge the withdrawal of the application so we can show nothing came of it.
Thank you, Mike, council. Motion to second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close no. She carries. Item C, special daily malt beverage license for the Vermillion Chamber of Commerce and Development Company on or about May ninth, 2019 at the Prentice Park Baseball Field. Again, Mike.
The Vermillion Chamber and Development Company has applied for the special daily malt beverage and wine license for the exhibition baseball game to be held on Thursday, May ninth at the Prentice Park Baseball Field between the Sioux City Explorers and the Sioux City Explorers and Sioux Falls Canaries. The VCDC has hosted these events before in sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen utilizing the special daily license without any issues. The notice of hearing and the police chief's report are included in the packet. We have received the release and indemnification released in the city for liability for the event. We have not received the certificate of insurance naming the city as an additional insured. The chamber said that their insurance agent is working on getting that. The police chief has included in his report that he's discussed this with the representative of the VCDC and recommends the following parameters be established. Seven staff members will supervise the event's distribution and consumption of alcohol. Signage will be posted at the entry gate and the alcohol dispensing point stating all alcohol consumed is only for inside the fence spectator area. No one under twenty-one will be served or allowed to consume alcohol. No intoxicated person will be served alcohol. No alcohol can leave the fence spectator area. No outside alcohol is allowed inside the spectator area. That staff will check all persons wishing to purchase alcohol, provide a wristband once their age has been verified. No persons not wearing a wristband or who appear to be under twenty-one will be allowed to purchase or consume alcohol. The special daily fee has been paid. Administration recommend approval of the special daily license for May ninth contingent upon the VCDC providing certificate of insurance and complying with the conditions as recommended by the chief of police. I think we have representative in the chamber here if we have any questions.
It's a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this topic at this point? It is contingent on the insurance being provided, correct? Turn it to the council. Motion to second to approve. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close no. She carries. Thank you, Mike. Turning to old business. First item, seven A, second reading of ordinance fourteen hundred amending the use of revenue language in chapter three, section thirty-four point twenty-four municipal grocery receipts tax, BBB. And John, please.
Thank you. Excuse me. Back on February fourth at the noon council meeting, you received a proposal to edit the existing language in thirty-four twenty-four to specify in there that funding would go for economic development, which has always been the practice, but it's not been part of the city code. At that meeting, the council received the proposal and as you recall, you sent it to two respective committees to take a look at, the Labor and Finance Committee as well as the Policies and Procedures Committee. Each one of those committees, if you will, adjusted the language a little bit and that was presented back to you at the March eighteen meeting. You had a report from the respective committees there as to the language that they suggested. Staff then drafted ordinance fourteen hundred based on the report that was provided and that was at your last meeting on April first. Prior to adopting that ordinance, you did add the language for allocation of the revenue to the second sentence that was there. Since that time, the council did adopt it, passed first reading of ordinance fourteen hundred at that meeting. There have been no additional language changes since that last meeting. As I think just about everybody in the city councils had one opportunity or another to take a look at this, offer input on it. Staff recommend approval of the second reading of ordinance fourteen hundred. Just a reminder that with the second reading of the ordinance, a roll call vote is required.
Thank you, John. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this topic at this time? Anyone in the audience? Seeing none, turn to the council for deliberation. Howard?
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the council for working on this and also mention that over the course of the last two or three weeks, I've had calls from the citizens, some citizens in Vermillion and personal meetings with them to support this issue and they're very, especially the ones that were here at the time that this was passed back in the eighty-five, if I remember right, and they're very, very supportive of it. So with that, I move that we pass this ordinance.
We have a motion to second. Is there further discussion? We have a motion to second. Is there further discussion? Tom, please.
If nobody out here is...
Well, I already went there.
Thank you. Appreciate it. You know, let me start by saying I don't disagree with the VCDC and the people who have been involved in the efforts in this community. They've done a wonderful job with the money the city's been giving and other funds, but we hold meetings at noon on our meeting days and they're in the conference room across the hall and they're not on cable TV and people don't get to hear the discussions that take place. But almost an hour was spent by the chamber, VCDC executive and a whole line of people who he works with, boards. But this board makes a decision on how do we spend the taxpayers' money? And to put in an ordinance, wording that says we're going to pick one of these people on the list and we will give them priority rather than we may give them priority and we don't call for an accounting of after they have spent the, for this year, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars the city is giving the VCDC from the BBB fund, that tax fund. If nothing else, how about a contract for each major thing so that we can keep track of the money? That's our job. How is our tax money being spent specifically? And so I'm grateful to all the work that's been done over the few years on business-related things, but there's a lot more to this community than business. We're a whole community and we have needs. Just recently, a pamphlet came out about something we talked about heavily a year ago, the thirty-five point seven percent poverty level in this town and the thousands of people, just under ten thousand, that use the food pantry. And those aren't businesses. And those aren't businesses, but there's certainly issues in Vermillion that need to be addressed. So with $250,000 going to the VCDC, 85% of which we're told goes to administration, I, I can't vote for this. I think it's not, I don't think it's good government to put this mandate into an ordinance when we don't know what may come up in the future, something even bigger and better, or a huge need due to a disaster. Municipal governments are struggling for money, and what used to be called a commercial club 90 years ago is now a Chamber of Commerce, and then they melded with the VC, with the Development Corp. company, and now we've been, we've been giving them money year after year. They already have priority if you look at our budget figures, so this doesn't make sense to me to have to do this. So let me ask what one of our professors used to ask after a long explanation. He'd say, "Why? Why are we doing this when it's evident that we're already giving them priority?" Can you answer that, Mr. Wilson, perhaps?
I don't think that's fair to challenge a coun, one of your councilmen.
Okay, may I ask the councilman a question? I'm not challenging him, I'm asking a question.
Oh, you're asking for a conclusion on something?
Why are we doing this? To formalize is the answer we got two weeks ago.
Okay.
Is, why do we need to formalize it when it's already being done? Maybe Mr. Welch can answer that. Maybe somebody else on the council wants to. I've had my say. I know I'm being run over by a train here, you know? My dad used to say, when I marched in Dakota Day Parade, "Good job, Tom, you were the only one in step." Well, Dad, I hope you're proud of me. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Any further discussion, counsel?
And this is second reading, right? We have to do roll call?
That's correct.
Thank you, Tom. I want to say that I share a lot of your concerns. When I first arrived to city council, one of our early meetings in August were the very long budget meetings, and going through these, all of the department heads are required to come in and meet with us and go through all of their line-by-line items. And in so doing, one of the things that we look at are all the one, all the organizations that ask for funds through the BBB funds. And it occurred to me that the VCDC, which in practice has been giving a lot of money, does not come in and do that same formal process, and that concerned me because I wanted to see more accountability and more transparency, if you will, as Tom is mentioning. It also concerned me because there seemed to be a general practice where this is happening, but the other organizations are not aware of it. And so from my perspective, the reason I'm supporting this is because it allows us an opportunity to hold the VCDC much more accountable, and part of this process is actually not just giving them more money, where I think the, the general consensus is to maintain the levels that we have been keeping, but rather part of this process also, which is not written in, but is part of procedure, is that we will be asking the Vermillion Chamber and Development Company to be coming in just as the departments had due, to show us what their plans are, and to give us regular updates. And so to me, this is an important language addition for the reason of holding more accountability and more regulation to see what's happening with that money. And so from my perspective, I think, and I've said this before, that Mr. Wilson and I come from very different perspectives, but I think this is a very practical solution, and it offers, I think for many, a consensus where we can both provide the funds that are needed for an economic development arm, because we are not able to support our own city economic development arm. We would not be able to do so as well as the VCDC does, but while also providing this non-governmental agency some opportunity to provide a clear budget to us at a regular budget time for their interests and for ours as well. And so with that, I support it.
Thank you. Anyone else on the council? Steve, please.
I think my support stems from simply naming the VCDC in an ordinance, and to Howard's point, making it clear that this money, which was originally created for the city to be targeted for development, economic development, the VCDC is the city's, the city of Vermillion, not the city governments, but the city of Vermillion's economic development arm, and therefore listing it as a priority item in an ordinance, I think makes it clear what the purpose of the BBB funds are for, and it does not tie our hands to a particular set of funding. So I feel like the argument over, because there is no set fund, or the set amount listed, the argument over whether is, we're codifying what we're doing now, either we're codifying what we're doing now, or if we left it alone, we would be doing the same thing we're doing now anyway. So we're really arguing over very little change over anything, and I think the benefits of this are, for the long term, positive, and so I'm supporting it for those reasons.
Further discussion?
Therefore, from what you've just said, we really don't need this amendment. Thank you.
Tom, I can make the same argument that you shouldn't oppose it because we, it doesn't make any change. So when you keep repeating that, it doesn't have any effect on anybody's, it's not changing anybody's mind. You are saying...
Oh, I understand that. That's clear. That's clear. But we're putting it into the wording of an ordinance without looking at the next 10, 15, 20, 50 years from now, and it might still be there. Something might come up.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. This calls for a roll call vote. If you could set the machinery for us. Results are eight yes, one no. Motion passes. 8A, new business. Let's see, I think we have three. Aaron and Sean, is that right? With, with Midco? Daniel Midco report, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Good evening, councilmembers and Mayor Powell. Thank you for having us this evening. My name is actually Brian McFadden. I'm the general manager of field operations for the Sioux Falls region. To my left is Sean Doherty. He's the field service manager for the Yankton Vermillion Systems. And then Aaron Kitzman, who you referenced earlier, is actually sitting in the crowd there. He's the director of field operations for the entire state of South Dakota. So again, thank you for your time this evening. Got a few quick facts about our Vermillion system. We have currently employed, we have eight field technicians in the Yankton Vermillion System. We have one preventative maintenance technician as well, and then Sean acts as the field service manager for the area, so he, he backs those folks up as well. Current number of residential homes passed by Midco in Vermillion, we have 5,643. Of those, we have 3,301 subscribers. Current number of businesses passed by Midco in Vermillion, 485, and we have 310 of those are subscribers. We have a couple of upcoming, ongoing projects in the Yankton Vermillion area, the Vermillion area specifically. We have the Heights, the student housing apartment complex, the Dakota Commons, as it's called, on Dakota Street. That's a apartment complex, student housing, that's in the works, should be finished this summer. And then we have the Carr Street Extension, which is a business park, Erickson Addition, it's part of the Erickson Addition. We're adding services, in-ground services there to service 10 additional lots in that business park. And yeah, that's all I really have. Do you have any questions?
No, you've covered it all.
So you're doing both housing units?
We're...
In the Heights?
In the Heights.
No, just the Heights.
Just the Heights?
Yeah.
What's happening with the other nine?
They contracted with somebody else, apparently.
Any questions from council for these gentlemen?
Do you handle, first of all, it's been noticeable that you've really improved some things in our community compared to some of the other providers. For example, using burying, burying cables inside pipes instead of just, that was a mistake. Do you handle our cable presentation of council? The, I could ask John this, I guess, but is this, is this part of Midco's system?
They can handle the technical angle, but Don Harris, who does it for us, we, we pay for Don's service.
Don's the operator.
Yes.
But it's a Midco service. I'm wondering if there's any way that closed captioning can be added to what you cover, particularly this meeting? I, I don't know.
That's a good question.
If you could look into it.
If you have the answer, we can look into that for you.
I do know that it's repeated later on YouTube.
Sure.
And eventually YouTube includes closed captioning.
Okay.
But it doesn't come out right, right away from here, and you know, if you could throw that in, we'd be really happy, I think.
Sure.
I know there are a number of people in the community that would be.
Absolutely. No, we can look into that.
Well, thank you very much for coming.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this topic? Yes, please. Come forward.
Scott Drewker, 1421 East Main. I guess I'm, I appreciate Councilman Sorensen's input, and I hope that that's true, that there have been improvements, I guess, as a customer. I'm probably less than satisfied, and I just had a few questions for the group. I'm, I'm kind of wondering how the consumer part of the hardware's being maintained. You know, we've been in town 12 years, and I think in that time, we have the same DVR box, so as I've changed phones and laptops and tablets, I'm not seeing a similar update on, on the consumer part of the equipment that's provided, and I'm, I'm wondering if in that process of new customers coming on, if there's a difference then in the machines that were being provided, if new customers are getting new updated stuff, and those of us that have been there a while have old ones, and if so, how's that justified if our, if the charges to us are the same? And I'm just, I guess, besides calling the company or, you know, feedback that we initiate, I'm wondering how they're monitoring customer satisfaction? Are they doing any kind of an assessment on what people think about the service? Thank you.
Thank you. Further? Heard in the discussion? Please.
Yeah. All right. So we do upgrade our, our customer premise equipment. The, the box that was in there for 12 years must be a legacy DVR. We've upgraded to TiVo equipment now, so customers just need to request an upgrade, and we'll upgrade them. How our services are monitored, we have a, a number of different metrics to monitor our, our system performance, as well as our performance, repeat callback rate for customers within seven days of a house visit, that sort of thing as well. Sean has done an exceptional job here over the past year and a half, and then, as you stated, Councilman Sorensen, that things have gotten quite a bit better. Where am I? I'm going to draw a sheet here. Yeah, that's, we, that's 96.61% of the time we were able to install or troubleshoot services without having a return visit, which is exceptional. Our goal is 96%, and we're exceeding that in this area. The customer satisfaction is monitored through NPS, Net Promoter System Score. We monitor that. We have customer satisfaction scores as well. We monitor that constantly. When we make changes, we call customers back if they, they have a, an issue or a complaint, and we try to address those promptly.
Thank you.
If that answers the question.
Further questions from council?
So is your customer satisfaction only through ones that are contacting you? Do you do one, that's a general survey of everyone?
Yep. Yep, absolutely. We send surveys after every contact that's made with customers. So they're email surveys, phone surveys, and we basically put all those together into a, into a score.
But it's only customers who are contacting you who you're checking with?
What do you mean, like going out and actively going to a door and pulling people or calling outbound?
Yeah.
That's a good question.
We, we do do some random samplings, not every single customer every year, but we do do random samplings in our customer base, folks who have not been contacted with a person.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks.
Further discussion, questions from the council? I think we received this report.
Want to receive the report? Second?
Motion and second to receive the annual Midco report. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close no. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Item 8B, a request from the law enforcement torch run in South Dakota and Special Olympics to use a rolling barricade to close Main Street from Radigan Plats to Dakota Street, and to close Dakota Street from Main Street to Sanford Child Sports Center on Thursday, May 16th, from 5:30 PM to 6:00 PM for the Special Olympics torch run. And John, please.
Thank you. Vermillion is fortunate to be hosting the Summer Special Olympics both this year and next year, and annually, we do have a torch run. It's usually a smaller event because we're not the host community, but this year where we are the host community for the Special Olympics, the request before you is to have what we call a rolling barricade. There'll be obviously a lot of law enforcement available to help with this event. What that means is basically we'll have an officer or two in front, the torch bearers, and we'll have an officer or two in back, and they will basically stop traffic or ask people to move to the side as the torch passes from Radigan Plats east on Main Street and then north on North Dakota Street. This event would be on Thursday, May 16th, and it'll last approximately half an hour, whatever the length of time it would take from individuals to run from point A to point B, if you will. So the request is for a rolling barricade on Thursday, May 16th, from 5:30 to 6:00 PM, and we'd recommend approval.
Anyone in the audience wish to comment on this item? Counsel?
Want to propose a second?
A motion and second to approve the request. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close no. She carries. Thank you. Item C, a request from Journey Construction on behalf of the National Music Museum to occupy the right-of-way along East Clark Street for construction purposes. And Jose, please.
Thank you. Journey Construction of Sioux Falls is requesting on behalf of the National Music Museum to occupy several parking stalls along East Clark Street directly in front of the National Music Museum. These spaces would be used to safely complete the construction project, will be taken part of the music museum, and also to protect the public from the construction activities that will be undergoing at that location. The city's code of ordinance allows the city manager to temporarily remove or designate no parking areas in the city. The argument could be made that Journey's request falls under this category. However, due to the length of the request, which is roughly 14 months, and the location's high visibility, it was decided to have the request be acted on by the council. Additionally, taking this, the city council will also provide a, an avenue for the general, for the public to voice any concerns they may have with the project or the location or any of the parking stall being removed temporarily. As mentioned earlier, Journey is requesting to temporarily remove parking. We do have an exhibit. So what Journey's requesting, just for reference, this would be East Clark, Yale, Harvard, this is the music museum, the parking lot to the east of the museum. They are requesting to temporarily close this parking area right here. It's roughly five parking stalls, and then the bus area right there. There would be a fence stretched out into the street with a gate at this location. Once the work is done in this area, then the fence would be moved to the back of the curb, but however, even though the fence is moved to the back of the curb, at that point, they're still asking for the parking to be, still no parking is allowed even if the curb, the fence is moved. At the same time, they're also asking for the pedestrian traffic to be rerouted in this, this location here, since their sidewalks, internal sidewalks at USC will be closed by construction fencing. Excuse me, besides the pedestrian safety, there's also some, the city also is also concerned with snow removal. This has been discussed with Journey, and it was agreed that the city would plow as close as possible to the fence, and that Journey Construction at that point would take and remove the remaining snow that's close to the fence. If there's any damage at that point, hopefully there's none, but if there's any damage, then it can be addressed by the contractor itself. They are, Journey's very aware that the city is wanting to maintain an open traffic both directions at all times, and that this is very important to us. There's no financial consideration to the city. Administration recommends granting Journey Construction the use of the right-of-way to place a security fence until June 16th. to place a security fence until June 30th, 2020, and to temporarily remove the parking along the same area for the same time period, as outlined in their letter of April 10th, 2019. A representative from Journey Construction is present for questions.
Anyone in the audience wish to comment on this, this time? Turn it to the council. Motion second, discussion.
I have a question.
She has a question.
Oh, you had your hand up first, okay.
Thank you. So I recognize that this is city property, but it obviously affects the university, including students and staff. And so I wonder if we have talked to the university, including the student government? And, you know, this is near the administration building, if we have communicated with them in terms of possible solutions?
I guess I have not spoken to them. I don't know if that works something from Journey, but actually, response to that?
Jesse Davy with Journey Construction. Really, this whole plan has been given to us by the university, working with their construction department. So although we're coming to you for approval, the overall plan, the closure of the sidewalks and the impact has all been ran through them and actually given to us by them. We have made some slight modifications to allow more access than originally given, but it has been.
And by them, you mean the university administration?
Yep.
Okay. In that case, I would just point out to our student representative to please bring this to student government, to make sure that students are aware of it, and maybe make an announcement to make sure students are aware, and perhaps consider bringing in Journey Company to explain as well. Thank you.
Tom, you have a question?
Related to that, first let me say, Jose, I think you did a wonderful job of really going through this and thinking of the contingencies and whatnot, so thank you for that. When it comes to notifying students, administration, and of course, the public and the people using the street, does the city, and John might have to answer this, does the city handle notifying of these kinds of things? That this will be fenced off, will be closed, or does Journey handle that?
Right now, we currently have in the plans to do all the signage for detouring and stuff like that. As far as official notifications, that has not been discussed. We could certainly do anything that would be necessary, but other than notification through the university, nothing has been discussed outside of that.
I guess on a typical project, city project, we don't notify unless, an exception would be the chip seals. And the reason that we do that is because there's going to be a short amount of time period, I guess, that there will be no traffic allowed on that street. But that's the only notification that we typically do. We usually, like Mr. Davies mentioned, we usually just have our signage do the talking. The road is not going to be closed, we're just removing parking. So as far as that's concerned, the roads are still traversable, I guess, by emergency equipment police or the general public will be able to use, so that a road, it's just the parking that's going to be affected.
Okay. So the speed limit will remain 20 miles an hour?
Yep, everything will be the same, except the parking.
Further discussion?
So Jose, how long would this be for, again, if it does pass?
It should be for roughly 14 months. My memo I do have starting April 16th, so tomorrow, all the way to June 30th, 2020.
Because as some of you know, my office is in Julian Hall, and I know that parking is tight all over campus anyway, but especially around with the med school, the South Dakota Union, Julian Hall. So it'll be like a whole year of losing parking spots.
Five spots.
Five spots.
Yep.
We're hoping to improve on that. As we get farther into the construction, there's a lot of things we don't know yet as far as the end date, but that would be the worst-case scenario, and we're hoping to shorten that.
Okay, and then, once you move into the back of the building, the fence will be moved back to the curb? Will there still be parking allowed then, or no?
We discussed that. Part of the difficulty there is, is we can move to the back of curb, which would be an ideal situation to widen the street. However, if vehicles are to park there, it'll be nearly impossible for them to open their doors. And so for safety reasons and to keep people out of the street, we felt it was better to leave it into that parking lane with signage to prevent people from parking there, to try to prevent people from walking there, which is in the street, and really direct them to other locations for parking and detours of the pedestrians.
Not only that, one thing that you realize soon enough is that people tend to have what they call shy distance. So if you're in a vehicle, you tend to shy away from a solid object. And whether it's a fence, which I know is not very solid, I can knock it over probably, but it's, people are still going to shy away. So at that point, they're going to be encroaching into the actual travel lane, so.
I would recommend leaving it about in the middle of the parking lane. That'll prevent people from parking there, but also keep it away from the road a little bit, a little bit farther.
Further discussion? Do we have a motion? And a second? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Thank you. Item D, East Main Street and Anderson Street, temporary closure for mock DUI crash on Wednesday, April 24th, 2019. Matt, please.
Mayor, thank you. I wasn't able to attend the last meeting, but James presented this. Since Mother Nature threw us a curveball last week with her anticipated 65 feet of snow, we decided to cancel, and then it didn't rain until 6:00 PM on Wednesday. So what we've decided to do, working with the high schools, we've pushed back the event to the 24th of this month. The request is to close the road for the same amount of time and at the same time here in the day. So everything stays the same, just the date changes all for this.
Comments or questions for Chief?
Thanks for all your work on this. I know it's been a lot of work.
Counsel?
I move approval.
Did somebody second? Okay, we have a motion to second to approve. All in favor signify by saying aye. Close, no. Thank you. Thanks, Chief. Item E, resolution authorizing the purchase of a landfill trailer. And Tim, please.
Thank you. The landfill is looking to purchase a new loader. Back in August, we put it in the budget for the 2019 budget. We got a bid from Sourcewell with, for the price of $213,188.42. Butler has agreed to sell us the loader for that price. The 2019 budget, we had $210,000 budgeted for that. With our trade-in of the old loader, we'd be getting $83,000 for the old loader. So the cost of the new loader would be $130,188.42. The administration recommends approving this resolution.
Thank you. Counsel?
Does that seem like a good trade-in price?
Yes.
It does to me, which tells me you must take good care of our equipment.
Yes, and it's not a really, really nice environment we're in out there, so.
Yeah, I can attest to that. I move approval.
Motion to second to approve the resolution. All in favor signify by saying aye. Close, no. Thanks, Tim. Item F, final plot of Lot 4A, Lot 5, and Lot 1A, Lot 7, Partridge subdivision in the west half of the northeast quarter of Section 13, Township 92 North, range 52 west of the 5th Prime Meridian, City of Vermillion, Clay County, South Dakota. Jose?
Thanks. Sarah Associates. Sarah Associates has submitted the final plot on this tract of land, and they did that on behalf of the owner, which is Tailwind Vermillion LLC, which they are the owners of what's known as the Quarter. So that's the new apartment complex that's being built on the north side of Cottage Street. Here's Highway 50, Shriner. They do have additional land from what's being replatted, but as far as the replat, these are the only parcels that needed to go through that process. They are taking, let's see, they have one lot here, another lot here, and part of this Lot 1 right there, they're actually taking all those three parcels or tracts of land and combining them into one. And this area here, they have five apartment buildings located along with that detention pond over here. On this area here, which would be on the west side of Cottage, south side of Shriner, they actually have, they're taking Lot 1 and Lot 2 and combining it into one lot. And right now, they have two apartment buildings in that location. The city planning commission reviewed this back at their March 25th meeting. They recommended approval to the city council unanimously. The platting fee has been paid, and our administration finds that the final plot meets all of the ordinance requirements and recommends approval of the final plot.
Thanks, Jose. Counsel? Motion to second to approve. I'm not going to read that again. All in favor signify by saying aye. Close, no.
Thank you.
Item G, declaration of surplus and abandoned property for auction. Mike, you've got a pretty new car sitting in there.
Yep.
2014, that's pretty newer than some of the stuff I drive.
The action is requesting the city council declare surplus and abandoned property for auction. When a vehicle is placed in the impound lot, notice is sent to the registered owner that the vehicle can be claimed by paying the fine towing fee as an impound fee. If it's not claimed within 60 days, ownership of the vehicle reverts to the city. The list is attached of all abandoned vehicles and surplus city property. The last six abandoned vehicles are listed for use by the fire department for training. And when the fire department's done with them, there's not much left after they've chopped them up or whatever. Their fire department usually arranges to have somebody haul them down to scrap metal, and they're sold as scrap. And the fees that they net after paying the person for hauling them down there are reverted to the city to recoup what little expense we can from that. The other property is surplus city property, which is items no longer used. That's listed by department, it's at the very bottom of the page. And then on the back of the page, some of the equipment, some of this. And this would include the bicycles that are also found abandoned. I think the police department has 30, some of them. The auction doesn't generate a lot of money for the city, but it does empty out the impound lot and provide a way to comply with state law to sell any surplus city property that's no longer used. We worked with Hayes and Byes, who's agreed to conduct the auction. It'll be on Friday, May 3rd, 2019, at 5:30. Administration recommend the city council declare the attached list of property as surplus for disposal at public auction, except for the last eight vehicles that will be used by the fire department for training. When they're done, they'll be sold to scrap metal.
Thank you, Mike. Counsel? Motion to second to declare surplus abandoned property for auction. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Thank you. Item H, resolution authorizing the purchase of a Parks and Rec department mower. Jose?
Thank you. Budget sessions in August last year. The city council reviewed the 2019 Equipment Replacement Fund schedule as part of the 2019. The equipment replacement schedule, a 2010 Toro Groundmaster, Groundsmaster, 4,000D mower from the Parks and Rec Department was scheduled to be replaced. Administration would like to take advantage of a national intergovernmental purchasing alliance, or National IPA, bid for a 2019 Toro Groundsmaster 4,100D of $65,170. The Toro Company's participating distributor for South Dakota's Midwest Turf and Irrigation out of Omaha, and they have agreed to honor that bid from National IPA. Additionally, Midwest Turf and Irrigation has also agreed to take the 2010 Toro as a trade-in for $7,000. The 2019 Equipment Replacement Fund includes a budget of $71,000 for this purchase. This existing mower would trade in with, the existing mower would be traded in with this purchase. Midwest Turf and Irrigation will provide, as I mentioned earlier, the $7,000 for that. If the mower is traded in, the bid would be lower to $58,170. Administration recommends approving the resolution to purchase a 2019 Toro Groundsmaster 4,100D mower from the Toro Company's participating distributor, Midwest Turf and Irrigation, and to trade in the 2010 Toro Groundsmaster 4,000D mower for a net price of $58,170.
Thanks, Jose. Counsel? Motion to second to approve. All in favor signify by saying aye. Close, no. Opening bids, item A, bid opening for Anderson Street Improvements, Main Street to Clark Street. Jose?
Thank you. As I mentioned earlier, I guess, in the year, or last year, this item was actually brought up to the city council as a form of agreement with Banner Constructors, or Banner Associates for the design of the reconstruction of Anderson Street from Clark all the way to East Main. Staff also has places in the city's capital improvement plan for reconstruction since 2015 with intention of completing the project in 2019. Bits on this project was actually, were opened this morning at 10 o'clock. The city sent plans and specifications to 21 possible bidders and four plant houses. From all the plans and specs sent out, the city only received three bids. We do have a table in your agenda with that information. The low bid that we received was from Masonry Components out of Yankton, and their bid was for $419,685.39. Even though that's a pretty good bid when you compare it to our city estimate, we are asking to table this, and that's due to the fact that we are requiring qualification statement from the low bidder. And that's mainly due to the type of project that we're having. We're finding out that there's, originally, the cement treated base was a novelty, let's say, and there were very few contractors that did this, and so we felt pretty safe about it. But now it's catching on, so we're getting a lot of people that do this all of a sudden. Well, we want to make sure that we actually have somebody that can do this. We don't want somebody to show up with a rototiller and a bag of cement and start doing this in our streets, which could happen. We don't want that. So that's what we're waiting for. And the contractor, or the low bidder, has actually been made aware of this and are concerned, and we're trying to work with them as far as getting this documentation so we can complete our review. We have budgeted more than enough money for this, roughly $625,000 from the STIP fund for the reconstruction of the street. This amount will also be used to pay for the design consultant and the geotechnical services that would be required during construction. We estimate that the cost for consultants would be around $30,000, of which $25,000 has already been paid for the design of it. So really, $5,000 is going to be the add-on. Administration recommends tabling the award until May 6th, 2019. The additional time will give staff the time needed to perform the review and for the bidder to supply the additional information needed.
Thank you. Counsel? Motion to second to table. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Jose, are you asking for clarification for just Masonry or all of them?
No, that was actually something that we included in the bid documentation that they had to provide with their bid.
Oh, and they just failed to do it?
They didn't fail, they gave us, they gave us part of the information. We're asking for more questions, that's all.
So it's just the one?
Yeah, well, all three of them had to supply it. Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Item B, bid opening for the Elm Street, Alumni Street to 300 feet south, grading, curb and gutter, and sanitary sewer. Jose?
Thank you. This extension of Elm Street is tied to developers agreement that the city has with Vermillion Heights LLC. They are the owners of the Heights Development, that new apartment at the corner, southwest corner of Alumni and North Dakota Street. They, as part of our ordinance, we do require that all infrastructure has to be completed prior to a building be constructed, and there's a portion of Elm Street that needs to be completed. And that's what this agreement takes into effect. The original agreement allowed the Heights to complete that section of Elm no later than October 1st, 2020. But they did, on September of last year, they did approach the council with a petition to complete it sooner than that, and that triggered our assessment process, and this would be part of that assessment, the actual, getting the contractor to do the work. Similar to the previous project, we did send this out, or we opened bids today at 10 o'clock. We did send this to 21 possible bidders and four plant houses. We only received three bids. The low bid in this instance was actually M&amp;M Construction out of Vermillion, and their bid was $97,249.15. The project was not budgeted last year for, because we didn't know what was going to happen. So we're going to have to be reviewing the budget this year and mending this.
Thanks, Jose. Counsel?
Move.
Motion a second to approve. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Motion carries. Thank you. Item C, bid opening for sidewalk repair assessment for Northwest Quadrant. Jose?
Thank you. This is the never-ending project. We are, this year, we're going to be doing the Northwest Quadrants, as you mentioned. These sidewalks were inspected in two thousand seventeen, and we do inspect that periodically, or every year we inspect a new quarter of the city. This quarter, after the inspection in two thousand seventeen, the property owners were notified, and they were given until no later than June twenty eighteen to either submit a permit to the city or have the sidewalk done. Just because of the workload that we had, we are bringing it now to the council. This also allowed some of the property owners to complete that project or remove that if they actually had a contractor in mind. We have been finding that even though there's a lot of people that do concrete work in town, they're all very busy. So a lot of times, private property owners need a little bit extra time, and I, I believe that they want to get it done themselves if they can, or hire their own contractor. So it's a little bit easier to work with them in this fashion. Regardless, we did open bids on this on April ten, two o'clock. The bids were sent to, or the notices were sent to eight potential bidders and the four building, builders exchanges. The city received two bids. The low bid was from M and M Construction for thirteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars and one cent, and the high bid was from Walker Construction for a little bit over seventeen thousand dollars. Even though bidding is required, is not required, if the cost of the project does not exceed fifty thousand dollars, due to the fact that we're going to be assessing this, we do require bids. So that's the reason why we're bidding it. Two thousand nineteen budget includes sufficient funding for the cost of the assessment. The amount includes sidewalks being assessed and the city sidewalks being repaired as well. Administration recommends awarding the sidewalk repair to eminent construction for the previously mentioned bid amount.
Thanks, counsel.
Move approval.
Motion a second to approve the bid opening. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Are you done?
I am.
Okay. We'll turn to the city manager's report. John, please.
Thank you. Just a reminder that we do have three terms expiring on our Human Relations Commission. One term is for a post-secondary student, and that is a one-year term, and the other two terms are each for three years. We would ask that expression of interest forms, which are available at city hall or can be found on our website, that those be turned in by noon on May first, with the city council making appointments at the May sixth meeting. Also, coming up on our library board, we do have two terms that will be expiring in May. These terms are three years each. Expression of interest forms are due by Wednesday, May fifteenth at noon, and then we anticipate the city council will make appointments at your May twentieth meeting. At the next planning commission meeting, which is Monday, April twenty-second, there'll be a conditional use permit application for placement of a Verizon telecommunications tower. This is, would be located in the west side of Market Street between the existing city parking lot that's there and the National Guard building. Last November, you may recall, the planning commission approved the design. Step two in this process is the actual conditional use permit to place the tower. So it'll be next Monday, the twenty-second, at five thirty p.m. here at city hall. We heard earlier this evening about one street closure coming up on Wednesday, the twenty-fourth, for that mock DUI drill with the high school. The second one is, just a reminder, you approved it, I believe, at the last meeting, but Thursday's on the Platts, there'll be one for Earth Day, Thursday's on the Platts. Thursday, April twenty-fifth, from four to seven p.m., the section of Market Street, as it abuts, routing in Platts will be closed during that three hours timeframe. Last week, our wastewater department was recognized by the state DNR, Department of Environment and Natural Resources, as a recipient of the two thousand eighteen Operation and Maintenance Award, what, maintenance, and, let me try again, two thousand eighteen Operation and Maintenance Wastewater Treatment Award, a compliment to the staff down there, the great work they do. They received that award for outstanding operation of the wastewater system, complying with their environmental requirements with regard to surface water discharge permit that we do have. Two raffle notifications. One has already taken place, but so that's entered into the minutes. Back in April sixth, USC's Health Science Department sold five-dollar raffle tickets. That drawing was the same day, and the prize was a gift basket of oils and soaps valued at thirty dollars, and the proceeds from that raffle went to the Cystic Fibrosis Foundation as part of the Breathe for Michaela five K event. The second raffle notification came in today and was placed at your seats. The Knights of Columbus, they're selling their twenty-dollar raffle booklets. The winner is determined by the final score of each Monday night NFL football game. It seemed really early to me to have Monday night football on mine, but they are planning ahead. Each week, there'll be two twenty-five-dollar prizes that will be awarded, there'll be up to two hundred bucks sold, and the proceeds from this raffle go to the charitable causes that the Knights of Columbus support.
Comments or questions for our city manager? Tom?
If I missed this earlier, I apologize. Would you introduce Eleanor?
If I could remember her last name, it'd be, maybe you should have Eleanor introduce yourself. I can't remember her last.
Eleanor Rhodes. I'm fresh in the USPM. Just.
Welcome.
Steve?
John, with regard to the cell phone tower, is there a role, will you remind me of our role, the city council role, in that decision of the design or placement?
Sure.
As we move along?
Okay. So when that was being developed, probably about a year and a half ago, there's a lot of different discussions, and the final process that was approved in ordinance was that the planning commission would approve the design and the conditional use permit, and then if there is an appeal, the appeal will be heard by the city council. Does that answer the question?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay. Time to stump, Mike. Any questions of our city invoices payable?
Should we pay our bills, sir?
Motion a second to pay our bills. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Motion carries. We have no consensus.[1779.53]